And visible with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, would you mind praying today?
Heavenly Father, we come to you with grateful hearts. We thank you for the blessings of this day and on each and every one of us in Scotty. We ask that you guide us and direct us. We might make decisions that would be pleasing to you. We ask all of this in my precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much.
Motion to approve the minutes of June the ninth.
I will second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter request for appropriation transfer of funds.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item two today? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter request for fund transfers.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to fund transfers today? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter request for appropriation of funds.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item four? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of accepting board resignation from the Saida County Children's Services Board.
Any questions or comments in regards to item five? Hearing none.
Motion to approve, accept.
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In matter of communication from the Saida County Agricultural Society regarding the request for 2020 funding.
Questions or comments in regards to item six? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In a matter memorandum of understanding between the Dogtown and Saida County Sheriff's Office regarding a vehicle transfer.
Questions or comments in regards to item seven? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of proving payment of the regular scheduled accounts for the various funds, moral obligations, and then announce certificates in a total amount of one hundred twenty-six thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-six cents.
Questions or comments in regards to item eight? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of memorandum of understanding between the Southeast Economic Development, the Saida County Commissioners, and the Lawrence Economic Development Council to work together for the successful installation of a sewer line in the industrial corridor along the Ohio River from Franklin Furnace to Haining Rock, Ohio.
Questions or comments in regards to item nine? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye. I would like to add an item ten today, that being an executive session to discuss the possibility of hiring an employee, but we would rather go through the press right now and be able to handle that as well before we go into executive session. Kathy, would you have anything in addition today?
I have nothing at this time.
Mike, would you have anything at this time?
No.
All right, gentlemen of the press.
I have three on the agenda.
Okay, item three.
No, no.
Oh, three, okay, okay, go right ahead.
First of all, on resignation to the Saida County Children's Services Board, have they, once this resignation is accepted, how long do they have to replace that spot? And I know that person was the president of the government board, so I was.
My understanding is they have already had an election to do that. You'd have to ask the board more what the results were of who went into that seat, but the person who did resign was Tony Mantel. And he had a conflict, a conflict of interest, basically, is why he resigned.
Okay, the next one is, you've already added number six.
Okay.
I know it's something you guys kind of do every year, how about agricultural?
It's a, it's a higher vice code mandate, actually. Twenty-twenty funding is mandated by the ORC in the amount of twenty-four hundred dollars.
And by your laws, how many years has it had to be earmarked for certain things?
Not to my knowledge. They, it's amazing that that number's never gone up, it really hasn't, but it helps them, of course, with the fair and other events. It's not earmarked.
And finally, our last one on the agenda is number nine.
Yes.
It's another joint venture between Saida County and Lawrence County. Is it even split as far as money spent by both counties? And if not, what kind of formula do you use? And where are the funds drawn?
Number nine is memorandum of understanding between Ohio Southeast Economic Development, the Saida County Commissioners, and Lawrence Economic Development Council to work together for the successful installation of a sewer line in the industrial corridor along the Ohio River from Franklin Furnace to Haining Rock, Ohio. All of those questions are great questions, which are yet to be answered. The MOU is the beginning of the process. Of course, all of the entities mentioned here will work together on that project. Robert, I don't know if you want to say anything on that subject, you're here today, but there is a certain amount of confidentiality in regards to this project right now. And we are starting the process. We've been talking about it for a while now, but I, I think, hmm?
Thirty years.
Thirty years. We haven't talked about it that long, but actually, this is something that has been discussed by economic development, everybody, for, yeah, thirty years. And we're gonna make, we're gonna make this happen somehow. It's, it's gonna happen, so it definitely needs to be done. But this is the beginning of that process, to really make this happen.
Mr. Ward, could you comment on the importance of this project and what?
Robert, could you come over to the mic so they can hear you? Robert tries to stay out of the limelight as much as possible, I know.
Yeah, Bill, it's probably one of the most important areas we have in our county. And it being twofold by also including Lawrence County property. There's over three and a half thousand acres that could be developed for heavy industrial in that entire corridor. That's the potential it has in the future, and that's high-paying jobs, big industry. And we've had several, since I've been in office, RFIs that have come from overseas companies, three are still very active, one is recent as last month. So, we've got the interest in the property. The holdup is infrastructure. We have to have infrastructure in place this day and time in order to land these projects. They're going to other counties, other states, that are doing just that. They're putting that infrastructure in place, it's there. That company comes in, all they have to do is pull permits and they can dig. They don't have to wait two years for a sewer line to go in. That's, yeah, it's huge. It's, it's, it's one of the most important things I think we're working on right now, other than our airport, and that's property that we have.
I know, I know you've been here a couple of years, but could that have been a factor, the lack of infrastructure, and some of the things that did not happen in the Haverhill area?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because I know we were closed several times, and then it was canceled away, so.
That's the exact reason. Yeah, absolutely, there's nothing else down there that would deter anything. It's a, it's a, it's a wonderful place for that type of industry. It really is. And the industry we have down there, Altivia, we just did a, 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 a project with them. They're, they're, they're growing, and we're moving forward with even another one that we're looking at with them southern. A lot could happen down there, we just have to make the steps to put the infrastructure in place, and it makes it easier to land those projects. Very.
I'll add to what Robert said, we, one of the, one of the issues, we hear this a lot. It makes sense when you say it, but when you dig into the facts and the details, we hear a lot, river, rail, roads. We have all of those, why don't we have large businesses? Well, it's not enough in today's economic development world to say, okay, we got a railroad, we have a river, and we have roads. It's not enough. If your sites aren't development-ready, meaning infrastructure in place, I'll never forget, we went to a session a couple of years ago, and there was a guy that said, there's a difference between sites, S-I-G-H-T, and sites, S-I-T-E-S. And if you don't have infrastructure, you have a site, S-I-G-H-T. You might as well just stare across the field and say, boy, isn't that pretty? Because that's about what it's worth, it's a field. But if you have infrastructure, you have a site, a building site, S-I-T-E. And that's what we're working toward heavily, is, is those, the site, S-I-T-E, where people can come and develop, and that infrastructure will already be developed to allow for that. This, this Board of County Commissioners has worked very hard several years now to develop infrastructure in our county. It's one thing the government can do, and do responsibly, as that is to create infrastructure. And, you know, I, we, we hear people say, you know, need to create jobs. I'll, I'll say this again, if, if government creates a job, then that means the taxpayers are paying for it. Okay, so we need to be careful when we say that. We need to, as a government, work toward building the infrastructure, building the environment, building the, the positive things like we've done with enterprise and opportunity zones, and, and now with PACE, things that we can do that don't cost, really, a, a ton of money as far as those kind of things go, to create an environment for businesses to want to come to Saida County. So, we're working really hard on that, and really appreciative of all the efforts. And there's a major, major team effort going on. So, we're, we're very excited about what's gonna happen. And, and I believe if we can overcome this, this sewer issue, we're gonna see a lot of things happening. I don't, I, I don't want to say if, we're, we're gonna overcome the sewer issue, we have to overcome the sewer issue. It benefits both Saida and Lawrence County, and everybody who lives in those counties. And that's a lot of people, so, that's well over a hundred. Golly, that's a hundred and sixty thousand people almost, so, let's, we need, we need to get it done. All right, any other questions? Bill?
Not on the agenda.
Okay, all right, we'll come back to you then, okay. Brett, what do you have? Okay, all right, okay, very good. Um, we, we talked about the person who, who did resign was Tony Mantel, and he had a conflict of interest that had come up. And he has asked to step down, and has, we've, we've received and accepted his resignation. As far as, I, I guess I really didn't answer the timeframe to replace him. Internally, they've already done that. We haven't discussed a person to take his place on the board. I don't know. When we may, I'm not really sure. We have, we, we just haven't talked about it, yet, okay.
Brian, who posed the question?
Okay, Saida County Daily News, all right. Okay. Items off the agenda, Bill.
Yeah, at Tuesday's meeting, I said the prosecutor's office was going to review the three-hundred million dollar bond to SOPA.
Yes.
Thought you might act on it today, potentially.
Haven't seen it yet. Haven't seen it yet, and I know that Robert's really wanting this done. On the bond, Robert, is what he was asking about. Where it's, 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 right, the resolution to support it, basically, is what it says. One thing I want to make clear to everybody is that that resolution doesn't bind the county or even SOPA to any financial commitment.
That's correct.
Okay, so, unlike previous bonds, I, I think one of the things, and we have said multiple times, Mr. Crabtree's been very vocal about this, and we have as well, we can never allow another Shelton Industries to help it happen in this county. This resolution spells that out very clearly, okay? That that is not what this is about. Pure Cycle, these bonds are, are being administered by the Port Authority. They are the bond issuing agent. SOPA has its own attorney as a separate entity. We're having our attorney review the resolution, we haven't signed off on it yet. We accepted it the other day, if you recall. That shows where we support the project, of course. A three-hundred million dollar state-of-the-art facility in our region. Hopefully, we will support that. But we want our legal agent, our legal representative, to review that, and hopefully, we'll get that back over here real soon. We also had that memorandum of understanding in, in her wheelhouse as well, that she was reviewing. But it's very much a SOPA matter, as far as the ins and outs and the admin of the bond. This has been talked about on and off for two years, I believe it's been. Three, three years, yeah, it would be three years, because this happened and originally came up in 2017. And they're almost there. One thing everybody needs to understand is it takes a long time for major projects to put their, their fiscal house in order, to get the support. And during this time, I mean, my goodness, COVID, it was just one example of things that slowed these things down. There have been other issues that have come up in the markets that have, I think, stymied some investment in, in certain markets, so they're overcoming that, and here we are. We are working with Lawrence County on the sewer. Lawrence County is working on water. There's been great work being done on all infrastructure feeding into that particular plant. Of course, they built their pilot plant, which was a major investment in our area. So, InVenture slash Pure Cycle is very active, and, and we're almost there. So, we need to really get behind these individuals. There's Saida County people already working there. There's Lawrence County people working there. And we very much, in order to be successful, need to think regionally. Our people have historically crossed borders to work. We have people in Saida County that work in Jackson, and work in Pike, and work in Greenup, and, and work, you know, Lawrence County, and Adams, and even further. And then there's people from Jackson County that work in Saida County, and people that live in Greenup County that work here, and vice versa. I mean, that's something I think a lot of people lose sight of, is that when we work together, we have a greater opportunity. And that's what we're seeing in a, a big way. I'm so glad, there's been a lot of alliances forged, and we're, we're really starting to see the fruit of that labor. So, we have to stay positive, we have to keep moving forward. And what I'm very proud of is the fact that even during a pandemic, progress has been made. And that was an easy progress because people were working from home. They were trying to keep things moving, and, and they've done that. So, the counties that are on top of things, and are moving forward, and are hard chargers are the ones that are really gonna benefit, because there's gonna be a lot of people pulled back right now. Unfortunately, there's a lot of investment being pulled back right now, not, even in Saida County. We've had investors that, as they look, I'm, I'm kind of waiting to see how this shakes out. Understandable, you know, they're, they're looking at huge risk, huge amounts of money. So, but we need to do our part as a county to be prepared so that whenever people are ready to invest, we're here, and we're set up. So, that's what this is all about. Economic development is not easy. It's not as simple as just saying, there's a building, you know, it, it's not, it's not like that anymore. It takes a lot of work to prepare and be there, ready for someone when they come, so we're getting there. Saida County's definitely getting there.
Is part of a downer to be able to project realistically about how many jobs this may create with Pure Cycle?
Pure Cycle, they're probably within about three hundred.
Jobs?
Yeah. That's, that's for the PET, that's for the PET plant. You know, I think one of their visions is to see that as a manufacturing campus. But it depends on what we do, you know, and, and discussions with, with those that are high up, you know, those discussions have, they're, they're, they're watching to see what we do. You know, are we supporting them? Are we, are we doing what's necessary to get the infrastructure in place? And, and companies do that. You know, companies want to know if you're gonna be there for them. Yes, they're benefiting, but they're benefiting from being able to produce a product here. But what are we doing? And, and companies do, they, 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 they watch, and they, they wanna, they want to have that good relationship with local government and the local economic development entities, just like what's happened at Altivia. You know, there, there's so much more going on there. And, and in the future, hopefully, you know, there's gonna be more. I mean, there's some things in the works, but already, a great victory. You know, when, when Jobs Ohio stepped in in 2017, or 2018, I believe it was, whenever that all happened, you know, Jobs Ohio really came to the forefront, really did a great job. And then, you know, of course, we had, the commissioner stepped up and fronted the money for that industrial road. That meant something to them, that really did. I mean, Altivia saw that there was a huge commitment from the county to beef up that industrial road, and, and we did that in very short order, very quickly, Mike, if you recall. It was a, it was a quick decision that had to be made, because we had a lot of jobs on the line.
There was some other departments that were involved.
There was, ODOT, Jobs Ohio, Jet ISO. I mean, there was a lot of people that came to bear, and that's exactly what we're talking about. That's exactly what's happening with this MOU we talked about today. No individual entity has the financial ability to fund something like this. But working together, finding the buckets of money, it can be done, but you have to have those relationships. And, and it's that, we're there, and it's just gonna take some time. One of the things that we are really focused on, really working hard on, is grant funding. And we need to bring as much as we can into Saida County, and we're working on it, so. What else? Brian, you got anything?
I, I've got several.
Okay, all right, okay. Let's have them.
I'm, I'm just gonna go in order as these came up, because I can't differentiate between who's press and who's just a citizen asking a question. But from Carrie Sloan Duncan, she actually has eight questions. So, I'll, I'll read one and let you address it, and then we can move on to the next, if, if you want to do that. Do you believe we need reform to end systematic racism?
There is no doubt that in certain aspects of our society, there is systemic racism. What that reform looks like is for legislators to decide. I guess, I guess the question I would have is, there's definitely certain areas that need to be looked at. I think criminal justice is one area that historically, we have seen issues, and those need to be addressed. As county commissioners, we don't make law, we follow law, we do a higher vice code. But I think, I think the fair answer there would be, say, sure, there, there's things that can be done, there's no doubt. The question, the, the thing is, is to identify. And that's one of the things we've had, I, I've had some great, great discussions here lately with some community leaders on what does that look like here in Saida County, because reform begins at home. And, and that's, that's what we need to really focus on.
The, the next question is, if so, how do you plan to use your position with regards to this?
Okay, I think it kind of goes back to what, we can reach out to the community, we can discuss how we can move forward. This is more of an elected official level kind of thing. As commissioners, as I mentioned, we follow the higher vice code. I think if, if people have examples of this, they need to be talking to elected officials who can make law, who can make revisions to law. I think it's important that we do that as a society. I, I, I think we've made great strides in our country over the years. Mr. Crabtree mentioned how much different it is than what it was in the fifties and sixties last week. And, but there are still disenfranchised minorities. There's still people that feel like they, they don't have a voice. And we need to, we need to make sure that we have that voice, they have that voice, and most importantly, that we are working on it together.
What legislation, if any, would you like to see in reforming systematic racism in regards to our local, state, and federal government?
Once again, we don't propose legislation. Locally, I, I think, you know, we, again, we need to identify that, what, what are those things locally that we're dealing with that are blatant systemic racism items? I think we need to identify those, and then we go from there. But that's, that, that all begins with a discussion. And my, my, I guess my question to her would be, what would she propose?
Are you willing to speak to state and federal legislators?
Yes.
Are you willing to become more active in the entire community?
I think we are active in the entire community.
Are you willing to encourage unarmed police officers to become involved, especially with our youth?
Sure, and, and I believe that they are now. You know, one, one of the things we do is, you know, we have school resource officers, they go out there every day. Now, I'm talking about county, I'm talking about deputies. And, and they interact with our youth all the time. I think the Ports and Police Department, I, I've, I've seen the same thing from them. Does there need to be more outreach to bridge any divides? I think that goes with society as a whole. I, I think anytime we can show kindness to each other, and, and earn trust. You know, that, that's one thing I've, I've seen through this, a lot of people have been screaming, we deserve respect. Respect is earned. And, and I, I think that, for the most part, there is a lot of respect for our law enforcement in our area. And I, I think there's quite a, a bit of respect for our community. We all, we all live here. We, we all live here. We live here, we die here. We, we work here, and I, I, I think there's been great strides in our community to, to reach out, but there's still more to be done. There's still people that are affected by generational poverty. There, there's still people that feel like they've been left behind in the job market, for whatever reason. There's multiple reasons why. And we have a lot of people that work on this on a weekly basis, to try to bring people out of poverty, and, and to try to. But there's, there's a lot of things that need to be done there. You know, I just had this discussion the other day with someone about, you know, our welfare system and job and family services, and how there's so many problems with the way it's designed for someone who wants to be, who wants to work, who wants to get out, out of that poverty, that cycle of poverty. But yet, it's almost punitive at one level. And, and once you get to a certain level, if you better yourself too much, then you lose all your benefits, where there, that, 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 that bridge is just too wide for a lot of people. So, we need to figure out a way, and, and again, that's not something we can do. But we do have a voice, and one where, and I have voiced this opinion. and I have voiced this opinion multiple times to leaders up the ladder, uh, at the state and federal level, that we have to figure out a way to make it possible because I cannot tell you how many times I have heard stories and people listening right now will know exactly what I'm talking about. Of, and I'll just give an example of a single mother that's trying to, to raise two kids and she's working and she's trying her best. But yet when she's offered a raise, you know, to move up in the company, that if she takes that, it's too much of a risk because she loses her benefits, she loses her medical, she loses things and it's too big of a bridge to, uh, a gap to bridge, it's just too hard. So what do they do? They don't take the raise, they stay where they are. And to me, that's wrong. We gotta reduce the risk and to where eventually one day they don't have to be on welfare. They don't have to be on, uh, you know, any kind of benefits because, and, and you know, um, my wife and I, when we first got married, we were dirt poor. I mean, we were dirt poor, we had, we had hand-me-down furniture, we both worked jobs, I worked days, she worked nights. And we had, I'll say it, we, we had WIC when we had our first child. Lori went and, and got her healthcare at the WIC clinic. I mean, and, and there was a time, I remember there was a time where we both, you know, we, we were looking at our income and we were like, do you want to stay in subsidized housing? These, these are real conversations people have, you know, I, I remember those days, we were in subsidized housing, like a lot of people are here. And they had, they got to the point to where they had to make a decision. Do I stay here or do I take that leap? And, and it's scary for some people, it's real scary. And, and we finally were able to take that leap and there's many, many people that do. But it's hard for some and, and it's almost impossible for others. We've got to figure out a way to raise everybody up. And, but it's, it's also a lot of personal responsibility for someone. It takes a lot of personal responsibility, a lot of drive. But we gotta figure out who are, who are the ones that are being affected and who are the ones that we, we need to really focus hard on and, and, and help them. What does that look like? I don't have all the answers, but I, I do have empathy and I do, I do understand, uh, mainly, mainly because of my background. You know, I don't, I don't think any of it, and we all came from poor backgrounds, used to be, there was a time everybody was poor so nobody noticed, nobody noticed, uh, who was rich on the block because everybody was, you know, poor. But that, that, that is, um, that's the kind of thing I'd like to see in America is, um, where these, these programs are made to where it's, it's easier for someone to get out of them. Cause I feel like a lot of people are bound by them. And, uh, welfare's not supposed to last for a lifetime. It's supposed to bridges to a higher, higher place. And right now, that's not happening for everybody. We need to figure that out.
Are you willing to show up and support peaceful protests between police and citizens?
Well, the second part of that is kind of frustrating to hear between police and citizens. I, I don't understand why that has to be drawn out like that. The police are not our enemy. Uh, I reject that kind of thinking, I really do. I, I, I think we should be very careful not to label, um, an entire group of literally millions of people, um, that serve in law enforcement around our country because of the acts of a few, uh, who did wrong. There's no doubt, we all reject what, what happened there, uh, in Minneapolis. But, um, as far as peaceful protest, I've never been a protester. I don't, I don't intend protest, that's just not me. The majority of Americans fall in that category. It is their right to protest, it's their right to go and march. But that's, that's personally, that's not me. You know, but we do support, um, those that were angry about George Floyd. Yeah, 100% should be, everybody should be livid over that. But, you know, I'm, I'm personally, I'm not somebody that does that. I don't know how you guys feel, but.
Well, just, you know, from, you know, the, the general information that's been going back and forth here. I think people need to realize, uh, uh, back in the fifties, things were a lot different. Today, most people are much better educated, most people are a lot more open-minded. Uh, I spent three years in the army, I had a lot of friends of several races. There were people that were Japanese, there were people that were, a, a lot of people that were black were good friends of mine. Uh, there was Puerto Ricans that served in the military. There were Mexican and there was American Indians that served in the military. And a lot of them were very good friends of mine, dear friends of mine. And I, you know, I don't, as far as racism is concerned, I think it's, it's wrong to think that all of America is racist. Uh, you know, you have racists in every society and in every race, but you, you have most people, in today's society is, is more open-minded, they have a lot of friends that they care about and they don't see color. And they don't see race, they see friends. And I think, uh, you know, we can't label everybody as a racist. And we've got to realize that you're going to have problem areas, no matter where it is, you're going to have problem areas from now on. Uh, there are some people that are just bad people. Uh, obviously what happened to that gentleman the other day. Uh, you know, when, when that, uh, police officer put his knee on his throat, you know? That was wrong, I mean, that was wrong to do and it wouldn't matter what his race was, it was wrong to do that to anybody. I mean, I, I'm the kind of person that, I, I can't torture an animal. And, you know, I mean, if I see an animal that's hungry on my doorstep, according to law, I have adopted it if I feed it, but I can't help but feed it. You know, and I, I, I'm just the kind of person that I try to treat every creature, every human being as another friend. And I don't look at someone as to whether they're, they're good-looking or ugly or whatever color or race they are. I look at them as friends and, and neighbors. And I think most of Souda County, uh, if you look around, you have problem areas all over the country. Some of your, uh, southern states are still, uh, you know, traditionally the ones that have more of that problem than, than they do up north. But the reality is, is, is I think people need to realize that most of America are good, very good people. And they have friends of every race and they don't, they don't see color, they don't, they just see friends and they see neighbors. And I, I think that people need to realize that, you know, this is not a war between the blacks and whites. This is a war between bad and good. And when people do the things that they do, like they did the, the gentleman that died the other day, uh, that's wrong. It doesn't matter what your race is and I, I think we need to realize that. We need to encourage the people that we can affect, uh, to do the right thing, regardless of their personal feelings and just, just be better people.
Her final question, are you willing to use your position to create unity within our community?
Absolutely, and I'm glad she asked that question. You know, we have done, as county commissioners, we have been honored to do a lot of projects in our community. Through community development, block grants, chip grants, um, the, the work that our office does. Uh, I can't say enough about what our clerks do and, and others that, that work really hard. And, you know, I made a comment on Facebook about, you know, some people are talking about defunding and tearing down. Uh, I think we need to develop and lift up. I, I, we, we, we don't, and, and I learned something when I first became a commissioner and my, my crab tree taught me this. Is, um, in, in the private sector, we, we always had this motto, uh, do more with less. We always had that, we always had that motto. And, uh, Mr. Crabtree taught me something very important, you always do less with less. Cause realistically, that's just the way it works. And, um, I, I think that when we tear down and we don't focus on building up a person, a community, um, we don't get anywhere, we, we just don't, we don't make any gains at all. And that's one reason whenever this happened to Mr. Floyd, um, you know, we reached out to different people in the community. And I can't tell you how many times I've sat down with people one-on-one, that's something I really like to do. You, you mentioned protesting. What I have seen in America over the last few days has been just absolute anger beyond control. Some were peaceful protesters, but in the midst of that, the memory of George Floyd was lost. Because people took it upon themselves to burn and loot and destroy. And you can't tell me that raiding a liquor store or ripping an ATM out of the wall, stealing the money, or attacking and destroying the Macy's flagship store in New York City in any way, shape or form honored the memory of George Floyd. It didn't, it marred the memory of George Floyd. But what does honor, not just Mr. Floyd, but the others who died during the rioting, the looting. I think about the police officer that died, uh, the black police officer that died in riot, he was killed during rioting by a group of vigilante people that, uh, and, uh, it doesn't matter what color they were, they were criminals, okay, that killed him. Their memories would be best memorialized, our memory of them, by us coming together as a community. And, and that's what I've tried to do. I've asked that question, what does systemic racism look like in Souda County? Because we, we're Souda County commissioners, we can't be the commissioners for the United States, it doesn't work that way. But we can lead here, we can ask questions here, we can work together with our city leaders and others, our community leaders all across this county to try to bring about change that's needed. We need to understand what's needed, we need to understand better what's happened. And, and determine, you know, if, if there's a, if there's a problem, let's get to the bottom of it, let's address it, let's, let's do what we can. But I think the way we do that is, is we don't do it by burning and looting and destroying. We do it by sitting down and having intelligent conversations and looking at the facts, looking at the statistics, looking at what's happened and actually sitting down and intelligently designing resolution for those issues. That's the only way you're going to see change. If you want change, you have to talk, you have to communicate. And we are more than open to do that. We, we have, like I said, we have done tons of things in the community, all communities. That's one thing that we really, we strive to do. Um, you know, we, we try to, we always call it, we spread the love, you know, we try to spread the love as many as we can. And, uh, and you know, I, you're going to have a hard time finding somebody to argue the fact that we haven't done that. Where there's funding, we've been able to do quite a bit to help everybody. And, um, we wish we had more, we wish we had the ability to do more. Uh, the mechanisms aren't always there to do it, but, uh, we try. You know, we really do try, uh, to be fair and to be equitable and to help as many as we can. So, we'll continue to do so.
From Sin Mackley, Governor Dewine was pretty clear that he wanted all Ohio law enforcement to take Ohio's use of force certification. N B P D has completed it, S S U and P P D are in process. The sheriff's department hasn't begun the training, would you encourage them to participate?
Uh, yes.
From Rebecca Flag has some questions, but they're for the sheriff's department and her concern is that she can't get a hold of anyone to answer those questions.
I would, uh, continue to call or actually walk in the sheriff's office and ask to talk to someone.
Uh, she, she was curious as to whether you could answer them, but I don't think.
I, 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 we would probably encourage her to talk to the sheriff.
Yeah.
Again, people need to understand that the county commissioners are not over. And this is one of the misconceptions, everybody thinks county commissioners run the county and everybody, every elected official answers to the county commissioners. That is not the case. Uh, the sheriff is a duly elected official, he is responsible for his office, he is to answer the questions from the public, that is, is his job. Um, county commissioners, the same way, we're duly elected officials, we answer questions as, as they are posed to us. The same as if it was the recorder or the treasurer or the prosecutor, as has been asked quite a bit, uh, several questions recently. So, we really encourage people to go straight to the source of the information, um, and, and ask. And, and I know it's frustrating and I'm sorry for that, um, but everybody needs to understand that we're not the end-all for information. We're, we're, we're not the depositor of all things, everybody. But I think what, what is good is that we are very transparent. We have meetings, they're on Facebook and we're, you know, we do our best to get out the information that comes from this office. But unfortunately, um, we can't answer for other offices. And, uh, it is their responsibility, those offices, to be, uh, responsive to the citizens. And I would encourage them to do so.
From Rose Mowery, any updates on a children's home for our county?
Um, not at this time.
And then from Justin DeLong, what do you feel Souda County can do to better ensure that voting is quick, easy and better accessible to everyone?
Uh, go back to in-person voting, uh, that would be a good start. Our, uh, again, here's another department, the Board of Elections is not, they don't answer to us. They actually answer to the Secretary of State of the, uh, State of Ohio. I hope, and, and, you know, we, we've talked a little bit about this, um, that in-person voting is restored. I believe this, if we can have wedding receptions of up to 300 people and amusement parks are open, there is no reason why we shouldn't have in-person voting in Ohio. We already have mail-in ballots, we've had that for several years, we have, you know, absentee ballots, uh, we have, a matter of fact, Ohio probably has one of the most, um, except for the last election, I mean, let's all face it, the last primary election was a mess uh, because of COVID, but we have a very open election process. And, um, actually that process has caused more funding, unfunded mandates at the local level than has ever been seen in recent memory. Uh, people having to work on Saturdays, people working on Sundays, everybody thinks that's free, that's free. No, that, that goes right on the county general fund and, but now I will say this, the Secretary of State has, has provided grant monies to pay for certain things, new computers, uh, of course, grant monies for election equipment. Of course, we had to pay a lot of money out, right out of the general fund for the election equipment this year. So, and, and then prior to that, it was the, uh, the, uh, um, poll worker, uh, computer equipment. So, the iPads, so it, it's, there's been quite, quite a bit of investment in our election process lately. But, you know, there's a lot of people that they want to vote in person, it's a, it's a source of pride. You know, they love to get up on that morning and make their way to that precinct and cast their votes. And that's important and we need to, we need to make sure that it is open and accessible and that anybody that wants to and is registered can vote. Is that?
Listen?
Yeah. Alright. Yes, sir.
Would you support same-day registration voting?
The what?
Same-day registration, something, a voter isn't having any registration to be voting for.
Same-day registration voting, I'll be honest with you, I haven't read that. Uh, I don't know. So they can come in and register and vote on the same day? If there's a vetting process there?
That's like, I don't remember doing that.
I'm not really sure, I, and I haven't seen that legislation.
Haven't either.
That's interesting.
I was going to do a question in some places about that, I don't know if Ohio has a policy that, I just wanted to ask.
You know, I think.
I think it'd be very difficult to vet and, and, and do all of that in the same process.
I know they do, uh, they don't do same-day registri- I know they do, uh, they don't do same-day registration voting, but they do provisional ballots. For say someone comes in and there's an issue with their address, there's an issue that's come up, they let them vote a provisional ballot regardless. Uh, but yeah, I don't know. I mean, there would, there would have to be a certain vetting.
I, I would think that the states would do that, it would be provisional ballots. I'm not sure you put, put some cast vote in.
The only thing I worry about is abuse, um, especially with border counties. Uh, when you have a contested election, uh, just, let's just throw an example out there. Say, um, you know, over here in Ohio, we're, we're, we got a very contested election in the, um, such and such congressional district. But, you know, people come in and they get registered and say, yeah, you know, I live in, uh, I live in Franklin Furnace, I'm voting. But they actually live in South Shore. You know, I mean, you, there has to be some kind of vetting period there. And I, I don't know, I haven't seen the legislation. Uh, again, I'll go back, Ohio is very, 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 uh, open in their election process. Actually more open than most liberal, you know, uh, you know, states. I mean, New York always takes a knock, always says, you know, Ohio's, uh, election process is so bad. It's 10 times better than New York's. And so, you know, I think Ohio's actually led the charge on a lot of things and a lot of voting opportunities. And, I mean, my goodness, I, I think there has to be accountability and it is a privilege, a right to vote in this country and everybody should look at it as an honor to do so. I've always looked at it as an honor because, you know what? We've had a lot of men and women fight over the years for our country to be free and a lot of people have served this nation and we should not take that lightly.
Especially with, especially with new names calling that ballot.
Yeah, that's true. That's right.
I have that, so, yeah, that's.
That's true. Yep. We live in a constitutional republic and, uh, people can, anybody can run, uh, and we, uh, we enjoy the opportunity, uh, to be able to vote in this country. Unfortunately, not enough people take advantage of it and should, it should. Anything else? No? All right. Um, we need to go into executive session?
We'll have to do that after the public hearing. We've got to start.
Okay. All right. We got to start on time. Okay. All right. So we'll do that.
Do we need a motion to recess?
Uh, we'll just go straight into the public meeting. Okay. No recess. We'll go straight into the public meeting. All right.
So is there a, a poll, is there a session?
Uh, we'll have to do a, um, executive session afterwards and, and we're not taking action on that executive session.
Is the subject going to be after the public meeting?
Uh, it'll be after the public meeting.
Is he a senior?
Hmm? You can. Go to. It's fine. Notice of the CDBG public hearing. We want to open up the public hearing for, uh, this year's community development block grant, um, program. The Souda County Board of County Commissioners intends to apply to the Ohio Development Services Agency for funding under the Community Development Block Grant Program, federally-funded programs administered by the state. Souda County is eligible for approximately $288,000 fiscal year 2020, 20, sorry, slash 2021 CDBG funding, provided the county meets applicable program requirements. A public hearing on Ohio's fiscal year 20 slash 21 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program has been scheduled for Thursday, June 11th. Here we are at 10:30 in the Souda County Commissioners Conference Room, 602 Seventh Street, Room 310. This will be the first of two public hearings, which are to be scheduled regarding the 2021 CDBG programs. Purpose of this public hearing is to provide citizens with pertinent information about the state's CDBG program, including an explanation of the program requirements and eligible activities. The CDBG program can fund a broad range of activities, including street, storm drainage, water supply, sanitary sewer improvements, park improvements, rehabilitation of housing and neighborhood facilities. The activities must be designed to primarily benefit low and/or moderate income persons, aid in the prevention of elimination of slums and/or blighted areas, or meet an urgent need in the community. Other units of local government, i.e. villages and townships, are also eligible to apply for fiscal year 20 slash 21 CDBG funding under certain CDBG programs, providing they meet all applicable requirements of the respective program. This public hearing will serve to fulfill citizens' participation requirements for the first or general public hearing for all units of local government within Souda County. And citizens will play a vital role in helping the county put together its fiscal year 2021 CDBG program applications. Therefore, your attendance is encouraged. For further information, contact Brian Davis at 740-355-8289. And this was advertised on Thursday, June the 4th, 2020. Here we are on the 10th and is there any questions from the public?
Four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars.
That can be split up over multiple projects. All right. And no further questions? Applications are available here in the office if anybody would like an application for a project. And with that, do we have a motion to recess?
I'll make a motion to recess.
Do you want to recess?
No.
Just go into the executive session.
Executive session, I'm sorry.
Can we do our actual call?
Huh?
Do we have to call?
No. Okay.
We need a.
Let me see.
Yes, please.
We're going, in the matter of going into executive session to consider the employment of a public employee according to the ORC 121.22G. Get a motion.
We have a motion?
Motion. So moved.
When I second.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. All right. We will enter into executive session. It won't be long. We have an 11 o'clock with our auditor.